I believe that every parent should have a choice. A choice with a good opportunity that the money, these $30,000, follow their kid, whatever school that they want to put them in for better education.
Another problem we have is capital gains tax. It's just an arbitrary number. It really makes no sense. I mean, what's trying to address the fact that it's unfair to tax inflationary gains? Correct? So why not just index out the inflationary gains? It's very easy to do and then tax that at ordinary rates. Now, I just think it's bizarre that we have different levels of taxation for different types of income. From my standpoint, income is income.
When Americans see this, that billionaires are paying a lower effective tax rate than they are, the tax system appears rigged to them and they lose confidence. But when the ultra-ultra wealthy are taxed at too low a rate, they are accumulating wealth faster than the country at large and their share of the nation's wealth is increasing year upon year. And we've seen that happen with, for example, the share of the Forbes 400 over the last 40 years going from 1% of the country's wealth, actually a little less than that, to now about 4%.
That's all just ahead after this brief message from one of our advisory council members.
Hi, I'm Bob Myers, president of the Associated Beer Distributors of Illinois. You know, there have been many increases in the number of choices of beers now available in the marketplace. Independent beer distributors offer consumers thousands of craft, domestic, and imported beers from over 3,000 breweries. Whether you're purchasing beer in a restaurant, a grocery store, or a convenience store, it's the beer distributors that make the delivery, keep track of the inventory, and ensure that the product you are buying is fresh. We're also responsible for recording how much beer is sold and ensuring that the state taxes on those sales are collected. And because we want everyone to drink responsibly, beer distributors play the central role in the three-tiered system that regulates beer from the brewery to its distribution and final sale at a retail location. Working in a highly regulated industry is just one reason we also support the work of the Illinois Channel. When new laws are proposed, new taxes, or new regulations, we all need to stay connected to know how these proposals may change how we live and work. I'm Bob Myers, president of the Associated Beer Distributors of Illinois, who are proud to help keep you connected.
Public Affairs very much thanks Rizikko, our sole corporate underwriter, for helping to make the production of this show possible.
I believe that every parent should have a choice. A choice with a good opportunity that the money, these $30,000, follow their kid, whatever school that they want to put them in for better education. If you can't read, Jeff, you can't be a lawyer, you can't be a doctor, you can't be a police officer, you can't even have a driver's license if you can't read. We must change the direction and the way that Chicago Public School is going because they're heading down the wrong road and they misrepresenting the taxpayers that take their money every year that goes to Chicago Public School. We're talking about over $5 billion. We got to be accountable and we must have transparency. Before we do all that, we got to look at the numbers and call for audit. I believe that people that has not been elected by the people, that has been appointed, they are obligated to the person that appointed them. Business must continue as usual because they did not get appointed, I mean, they did not get voted in. They got appointed in. So they owe favors to the person that appointed. And these favors must change and they will change, Jeff, on November the 5th.
You're running in an election for school board. Perhaps this is the first time, certainly in modern history, when Chicago elected their school board members, right? That's historic. Tell us a little bit how that's going to go on November 5th, about that election.
Well, Jeff, you have 10 districts in Chicago. This is the first time in Chicago history that a person will be elected out of 10 districts to represent Chicago Public Schools. Then after they are elected, the mayor will have the opportunity to appoint 10 people. If I run in 6th District and I live in B, then he will appoint somebody in A, so on through the rest of the districts. And he also would appoint the president. So the mayor get to appoint 11 people and 10 people get to run in this time, November the 5th.
All right, so it's going to be a 21-person school board on November 5th that's elected, counting the president and the two members each from each of the 10 districts. Excuse me, it's going to be 10 of them who are elected and then 10 from the 10 districts are going to be appointed by the mayor and then one is appointed by the mayor to be the president. But it's a 21-member school board.
Yes.
And people would know if they currently go to these school board meetings, there's seven members counting the president, right?
Correct.
So it's expanded. People are going to wonder, how does that work? Is that awkward? Is it unwieldy? We'll find out. And what happens in two years, in 2026?
Well, in two years, all members, all 21 members of the Chicago Electoral School Board will run for office. And then they will have, I believe, a four-year term or a stagnated term. So the mayor will not pick anyone in two years. Everyone will have to run, even the president, and the president have to run citywide.
All right, so elections, hey, you never heard that saying, "Chicago ain't ready for reform"? Well, ready or not, reform's coming to Chicago, right?
Correct.
And why doesn't matter? 2.7 million people in Chicago. Does the school board matter? Does CPS matter? Why do these things matter? Andre Smith.
Jeff, it's so important for us to have this elected school board. Because usually, the board and the president is appointed by the mayor. This board is a $9 billion budget. This is one of the biggest incubators or the biggest opportunities that's in Chicago. $9 billion, 9.4 to be exact. But if you look at the numbers, and thanks to Wirepoint that I do my research and, because I don't want to just talk numbers to you without being, you know, having facts. If you look at 2018, the budget was $6 billion. And per school, I mean, per child or student, per year, we spent $17,000. And as you know, every year, the budget increased. So if we look at today, 2024, we had $9.4 billion. That's the budget. A little bit shy of $10 billion. And what we're spending as taxpayers, per student, per year, is $30,000. Now, notice something, Jeff, that from 2018 to 2024, we went from $6 billion to $9 billion. We went from per student, per year, $17,000 to $30,000. So yes, the budget is increasing. But our children, learning disability, a learning ability, is decreasing. In the black community, you have 79% that's graduating. But there's only, I believe, 18% that's graduating at the level of math and 14% at reading. Those numbers might be off a couple of points, but they're not graduating with the equipment or the learning ability to maintain out in this society. In other words, once they get to college, they're reading at an eighth-grade education.
Yeah, if that, so, I mean, those are terrible numbers. I think that anybody watching this may be shocked. A lot of people don't know that for the last 20 years, not just few years or currently what we're referring to, these numbers have gone up and down with, say, 10 to 20%, for blacks and Hispanics, maybe Hispanics doing a little better, but generally in the range of 10 to 20%. Reading at grade level, some would say reading at all, okay? That's a terrible number. And you know, it's not, it's not just a skin color or race problem because, you know, at CPS, I mean, you've got, yes, blacks and Hispanics more in the 10 to 20, 25% range, but whites, I think, only 15% of the enrollment have about a 50%. That's not great. These whites, on general, are more affluent family. They come with some privileges, some benefits that maybe some of the kids who are of color and lower income may not have. So really, we'd expect better than 50%. Why not 80%? Because they lack a lot of these problems and obstacles that lower-income kids have, irrespective of color. So, and when we look around the state, it's not just a Chicago problem. You can see similar numbers in Decatur and Rockford and Quincy. And so this is a public school problem, of which part of that problem is at CPS. Our main focus today is on CPS because we're talking to Andre Smith and he's running for the school board. So that's what this show is going to be about. But I always want to note for people, if you're interested in public policy, this is broader. It's a statewide problem. If you're Governor Pritzker watching this, he should be shocked because you've never talked about it. And if he knew about it, I imagine you'd be saying these numbers. If you're Mayor Brandon Johnson, I would think you've been there a year. He'd be talking about these numbers. Last time he heard him is when I talked to him about it in a press conference. That's a whole nother story, okay? But we should be hearing a lot about this every day. And, you know, why is this? Does he agree? We should be hearing about people who are running for Congress. Yes, in Illinois and everywhere, even Congress has something to say about education. So this is just a pitch for why you should listen. Don't you turn that dial. Don't you turn anything off. Dating myself, I don't turn that dial. There is no dial, Jeff. It's an on-off button. It's digital, right? Okay? But stick around because Andre Smith, you've talked about how costly this thing is, CPS, and how much is going up, right? And I don't know if you mentioned, when you're talking about property taxes, right now in Chicago, what's the level of property taxes? That, what corresponds, when we, in fact, when you said 9.4, not to quibble, but I think it's a budget now, 24, 25, 9.9 billion. So we can say 10. We can round up, right?
Yeah, see, Jeff...
So $10 billion in spending at CPS. Give us an idea. Do you have, can you tell us a little bit about the impact on the people who don't necessarily have kids in the schools, but they pay property taxes?
Yeah, whether you have, and some people just don't get it. They say, "Well, I'm not interested because I don't have kids in school." But you have property.
Right.
And right now, the property tax and the property owners are paying $5 billion at this point. That's going to Chicago Public Schools.
Through their property taxes.
Through their property taxes that make up this $9 billion budget.
Right.
And when you look at the numbers, because numbers make sense. And if you look at that you're a business owner and you walk into your place of business, you can't survive at a $9, almost $10 billion budget and you're putting the finances on the backs of the taxpayer and the level of education is on a decrease. So something, you have, you have to come in and change things around. And that's why, Jeff, I'm calling for an independent audit. I need to know where every dollar at. We have to be accountable for our taxpayers and every dollar that they give Chicago Public School with a $10 billion budget. And it's not like our kids are not showing up. They're showing up, but they're not being properly educated. So we need to overhaul this system. We need a world-class, a Chicago world-class education institution that everyone else look at Chicago and say, "I want to send my child to that school." That's what we need. And that's what Andre Smith is going to work on.
Yeah. I mean, did you tell people about your experience and about your kid and how they, how they were told there was a problem and your kid was illiterate? Have you talked about that with people?
Well, Jeff, my son was in, I would say, the 4th grade in Chicago Public Schools. And me and my wife at the time was called up to the school. And the principal had to be in her 50s. She's told, told us that, that my son was basically illiterate, that he had a learning disability. And I know my son. My wife at the time know our son. We knew that he didn't have a learning disability. And what parent want to hear that from someone else? So it was devastating. So we talked it over and we took our school, our, our child out of that school and we put him into a charter school. The next year, he was able to read everything that he saw. And he just graduated...
Where was that charter school? Where was that?
Uh, it was Avalon Park.
Avalon Park?
Avalon Park.
Avalon Park, okay.
Yes. So then he went to high school, Urban Prep. And he graduated this past June, the top of his class, with over 30 offers to college.
Wow. Do you have any idea? Go ahead, courage, go ahead.
Imagine, if we would have believed that teacher, my son today would be on Rettin, he would be on some type of pill, you know, and it would be a disaster. But we took him out of there and put him into a charter school. That's why, Jeff, I believe that every parent should have a choice. A choice with a good opportunity that the money, these $30,000, follow their kid, whatever school that they want to put them in for better education.
Well, we're, what would be some of those choices in, in your, in your world that you're suggesting? I mean, obviously, they can go to a charter school you're suggesting, which is what your son did, right? First to, what was it, Avalon?
Yes.
In grade four, right?
Yes.
And then to Urban Prep in high school, right? And the results were quite a bit better, right? So that choice worked. Any other choices that you would offer people other than a charter school?
Well, Jeff...
To take their $30,000 or so and plunk it down and say, "I want to give this to these other people." Well, we're, what would be some of those choices in, in your, in your world that you're suggesting? I mean, obviously, they can go to a, if you're on the school board and you could do something about it.
Well, I believe that the parents should make the choice and make the right choice on education, on the best education that her, her son or daughter needs. Not just because this school is across the street, because a half a block, well, a half a mile from where I live at, the school only has around 30 kids in the school. So do that make that a good institution or a good school? They should be able to go to charter schools. They should be able to go to private schools. They should be able to go to Chicago Public School or whatever school that that parent see. And the money should be able to follow the students. Right now, today, we see from 2018 to 2024, it's not working. And when, when I'm in office and a member of the Chicago Board of Education School Board in the 6th District, we're walking into a deficit. We're going to be underwater. The budget going to be $10 billion, but it's going to be over that. That's why it's so important for accountability and transparency.
Should the parents be allowed to take their money? You've already said they should be able to go to a charter school. If they can get into a select enrollment school at CPS, into a magnet school, all those choices, you should say, "Take their money and go there. The money follows the kid." Now, what about a private school outside, outside the Chicago Public School system? Can they go to somewhere, say, in Chicago, but a private school and take their $30,000 and go there? Is that okay with you?
Yes, it is. And I say this, Jeff. I'm not into this school versus that school.
I see, okay.
I'm into representing every person in the 6th District, making sure that they get good education. And because I'm representing the 6th District, I'm going to be on the board of, of Chicago, voting on every child or every school in Chicago. So therefore, I'm looking for education and good education. And I believe that Chicago should be Chicago world-class of education, the best education institution in this world.
Yeah, and so you've said, yeah, you're being elected from the 6th District, so you're focusing with special attention to the people and the kids in that district. But as you just said, if you were to argue for all of CPS to have school choice, private and public, that might, that might benefit the people in the 8th District and the 10th. So in a sense, you're representing all of the people in all of the districts. You're representing all of the parents and all of the kids of the 320,000 or so in the public school system. Direct question to you, Andre Smith, is you're running.
Yes.
Do you love competition for the public schools and allow them to compete better? And if they have to compete with private schools, that's all to the good. That'll make them better, right?
You must have competition.
You must have competition. Okay, and, and there's so many facets to this. I mean, you know, there are 44 schools, according to Wirepoints, who have zero students proficient in math. We have 620 schools. 44 of them don't have any kids at all who are proficient in the entire school. Proficient in math, 22 schools don't have any kids proficient in reading. They're not teaching kids how to read, how to do math. I mean, as a school board member, what can you do about that?
Well, Jeff, I say this. You look at Chicago Public School, because it is a business, and if you have a company and you're paying $9 billion a year as a budget and you're not getting any benefit, saying that you're buying product, but you're not selling anything, you can't stay in business. Something has to change.
Right. And so do you need to look into as a school board member? Well, is it the teacher? Are we hiring the best teachers? Are we, are we training them? Are we assessing them? Are we giving them all the tools they need? I mean, now I've gone to school board meetings off and on for the last decade. I've been on a school board, not here, but outside of Chicago. These questions are never asked. It's amazing. I've never seen it, okay? I've been going, I've never seen the president, current or past, talk about the percentage of kids who read at grade level in his school system. Shouldn't they be doing that? Would you demand that if you're president, that he talk about it? That the school board meeting discusses what we're talking about? Would you do that?
I would do that as a school board member.
As a school member? You think you could stand up and do that?
I have no problem doing it.
Yeah. So you say to the people running on the 6th, excuse me, say to the people in the 6th District, when you're running, you're running on that. You're running on school choice, aren't you?
Yes.
School choice, public and private, right?
Yes.
Everybody should have that. You, in a sense, were lucky enough to have a choice. Not everybody gets that choice at CPS. You took advantage of it and the world changed for you as a parent and for your child. The American dream was realized. Think of what happened if you listened to them. "My kid's illiterate. There's nothing we can do." A whole, that, your child's life, your dream would have been lost. If you can't read, you can't get a job. If you can't get a job, you can't go to college. If you want to go to college, you want to have a marriage, you want to have a family, it cuts out so much of your life, doesn't it, if you can't read?
If you can't read, Jeff, you can't be a lawyer, you can't be a doctor, you can't be a police officer, you can't even have a driver's license if you can't read. We must change the direction and the way that Chicago Public School is going because they're heading down the wrong road and they misrepresenting the taxpayers that take their money every year that goes to Chicago Public School. We're talking about over $5 billion. We got to be accountable and we must have transparency. Before we do all that, we got to look at the numbers and call for audit.
Okay, and who are you running against? You've got opponents in the 6th, right?
I'm running against a young lady. She's in her 20s, that Chicago Teachers Union is supporting, and her name is Anusha. I'm running against another young lady that used to work for Chicago Public School. She was assistant principal and she got fired from Chicago Public School and she's on the do not hire list. So I don't know what would make her want to run to represent Chicago Public Schools when Chicago Public School clearly said, "We don't ever want her anymore."
Well, do those two people, does Anusha, I think it's Thaddeus Curra, something like that?
Yes.
Jessica Biggs, this is public record, I hope I've got their names pronounced correctly.
Jessica Biggs.
Jessica Biggs, sorry. Do they believe in what you believe? Do they believe these numbers are generally accurate? You're referring to them from Wirepoints?
They don't even know the numbers.
They don't know the numbers? Really? You've talked to them?
No, I mean, they're running...
Anusha and Jessica don't know the numbers we've been talking about for the last half hour?
They don't know the numbers.
Do they care about the numbers? Do they care if the kids at CPS can read? Do you think the superintendent of CPS cares that these numbers show roughly 20% or fewer of the 320,000 students under his charge can read at grade level and maybe read at all? Does he give a damn?
Well, let me say this, Jeff. I believe that people that has not been elected by the people, that has been appointed, they are obligated to the person that appointed them. Business must continue as usual because they did not get appointed, I mean, they did not get voted in. They got appointed in. So they owe favors to the person that appointed. And these favors must change and they will change, Jeff, on November the 5th.
Yeah, so you mean Anusha, is she endorsed by anybody?
Anusha is ran by CTU.
What's CTU?
Chicago Teachers Union. So she's going to be the same thing that we got.
You mean, you don't think CTU, Chicago Teachers Union, cares about the fact that 20% or so of the black kids are reading at grade level? They don't find that number abhorrent? Is that what you're telling me?
Have you ever heard them talk about those numbers? Have you, what you heard them talk about is raises for themselves, air conditioners, nurses in, in the rooms, defunding the police. That's what you heard CTU talk about.
What are these seven people who've been on the school board, some of them perhaps for three or four years and are about to go off? What have they been talking about? Have they been talking about what we're talking about? I mean, they were all appointed by the mayor and the mayor before, mayor before the current guy, Brandon Johnson. That would be Lori Lieford, I think. I don't think any of them go back to Mayor Emanuel. What have they got to say for themselves? Did they just please Rahm Emanuel when he was there? Did they just please Lori Lieford? Did they just please Brandon Johnson?
They was appointed, Jeff.
So they, they care about the mayor? They care about, if they please the mayor, they've done their job, right?
And they're getting, and they're staying in office.
And these folks who are running at the, for Chicago Teachers Union? You come on, we'll talk with you. Talk with anybody. You tell me, tell me I'm wrong. Tell me you're running endorsed by CTU, but you care about these numbers and you don't give a rat's ass what CTU says. You think they would say that?
Look, CTU never went on strike because of these numbers of our kids not being educated properly. They went on strikes because of air conditioning rooms, [inaudible 00:01:59]. They went on strikes because of air conditioning rooms, nurses, defunding the police, and raises. And when you look at these numbers, these numbers are real.
You believe in these numbers?
These numbers are real.
You read WirePoints. You think they got it right, right?
You look out the front door.
Yeah.
You look at our children. You know, are they being educated? Do we live in an educational institution within the city? Are we world-class in education? No. Every parent should have the power to be able to choose good schools for their child to have great education and to be able to stick their chest out, just like me. I believe, Jeff, that the choice is the right way in empowering parents to have the choice and taking off the chains, making them decide to go to a failing school or failing system. Take the chains off and free up the parents and free up the kids and allow them to be what they were born to be.
So you believe in school choice, school vouchers, because you think that's best for the kids to get out of a failing system into one they and their parents think could succeed in teaching them how to read? Is that, am I getting that right?
I believe in good and great education. Jeff, I come from a family of royalty. My great-great-grandmother, name was Carrie Williams. She's the first person in U.S. history. She was a colored schoolteacher in West Virginia. She the first person to file a lawsuit in 1864 for equal pay and equal rights for colored students, for colored kids and for colored teachers. I'm carrying that torch in 2024 in Chicago. We will build a world-class Chicago great education system here. We're going to turn this thing around.
All right. Andre Smith, candidate for school board in the sixth district at CPS, Chicago Public Schools. You let us know. This is September 11. You have until November 5. We want to see you back. Let us know who's supporting you. Let us know who the good guys are, who the bad guys are, and how it's going. All right. Andre Smith, you come back, and you come back next week and every week to Public Affairs.
Donald Trump is effectively waging class warfare against typical families on behalf of himself and the ultra-wealthy. The question is, how does he do it? He starts off with sweet-sounding campaign promises. No taxes on tips or Social Security. China's going to pay big tariffs. Numbers like nobody has ever seen. But it's really bait and switch. Here's the real plan. First, pass another round of enormous handouts for the ultra-wealthy financed in part by new taxes that hit working people. Second, balloon the deficit to unprecedented size. Third, make it impossible to save Social Security or address middle-class priorities like the cost of housing and childcare. That is the economic agenda. One, two, three. The big winners are people at the top, everybody else's needs or shunted aside. Donald Trump wants Congress to spend $7 trillion on tax changes that would make the 2017 law look modest in comparison. His starting point is making the 2017 law permanent. On its own, that is horrendously skewed in favor of people at the very top. For every dollar in tax cuts that would go to a family of modest income, the typical millionaire would get a break of $540. Somebody at the very top would get more than $2,000. It's always the same Trump playbook. Donald Trump tosses out a bit of chicken feed to the working people, and the ultra-wealthy like him pocket huge gobs of cash. He also wants another big payday for giant corporations, cutting the corporate tax rate down to 15%. Yet another big giveaway at a time when so many of these corporations are pulling in huge profit. Donald Trump doesn't have a viable plan to pay for these reckless policies, these handouts. His only proposal to close some of the gap is a tax on nearly all consumer goods. Now, Donald Trump keeps saying that other countries are going to pay, but that's not Economics 101. Americans who are struggling to get by are going to be on the hook for Trump's handouts to billionaires and corporations. In my view, that is an appalling proposition. Even with the new tax on typical families, Donald Trump's going to run enormous deficits. When Congress gets around to looking at Social Security and the housing crisis, it's going to find that the Trump-class warfare has devastated the budget and made it impossible to come together and pass real solutions. Now, Democrats want to take a very different approach. Our view is, and this has been my position since the days when Bill Bradley, a far better basketball player, and I agreed on this. We want a tax code that gives everybody in America, everybody, the chance to get ahead. There's no getting around the fact that the expiration of much of Trump's 2017 law represents a big hurdle, and beyond that, there are new challenges to address. Certainly, the cost of housing and raising a family are at the top of the list, and I'd submit that every member of this committee is hearing about those issues. Reality is, there is no way to address all of these issues, housing and family expenses, without ensuring that those at the very top pay a fair share. Now, if you're at the very top and then, and you want to pay no taxes forever, all you really need are three words, just three words, buy, borrow, and die. Here's how it works. An ultra-wealthy person, investor, uses their riches to acquire valuable assets. Then that investor watches them appreciate, and they borrow against that value to generate cash. Then that person sits on the assets, enjoys all the cash they've been able to pocket, and when that person dies, any tax owed on the increase in value disappears into what I call the ledgers of history. Now, that kind of trickery isn't available to nurses and firefighters and people in the trades. Their taxes, folks come out of every single paycheck. The ultra-wealthy have got their own special set of rules. That's how billionaires can pay an average rate of 8% on the income they enjoy, far less than a typical middle-class family pays. I want to make it clear that I understand completely the importance of ensuring that people are successful in our country, and nobody should want to punish success. But also, you shouldn't punish middle-class work. That's what the system does today. The United States ought to have a tax code that's fair and that rewards success at the same time. No free rides, colleagues, for anybody, and that includes billionaires. Let me close by saying, we've also been looking here at the committee at other tax-dodging schemes, schemes that people at the very top are using. One example is private placement life insurance, a tax shelter that really has nothing to do with life insurance at all, colleagues. Grantor retained annuity trusts, what are called GRAs. Mega IRAs that are abusing savings vehicles in ways Congress never intended. Large and extremely complicated partnerships that are structured purely for tax avoidance. The Congress needs to address also the pass-through loophole that Donald Trump created in 2017. Now, Donald Trump claimed it was all about small business. Small businesses have our support. Unfortunately, that Trump policy was also a bait and switch. It became another Trump policy that made the biggest winners out of high-income individuals. All of those real estate and oil barons, all of them won. Those high earners don't need yet another break. We support the small businesses. We support people, as I say, who want to be part of an America where everybody gets ahead, and we're going to stand by the pledge to protect those with incomes under $400,000, and that certainly applies to small business owners. Lot to talk about today, and look forward to hearing the views of all my colleagues, Senator Crapo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And this, this hearing is a timely hearing on one of the more critical issues that will face our nation next year, and frankly, is facing us right now. We'll have an opportunity today to talk about the reality of the 2017 Tax Act, which is the focus of the debate next year, and what it really does. The reality, contrary to what is often said by my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, is that the TCJA, the 2017 Tax Act that was put into place when the Republicans and President Trump controlled the Congress, has had a massive effect positively on everybody in America. The economy was the strongest, grew to be the strongest economy, I think, in any of our lifetimes. Unemployment was down at historic lows. Wage growth and job growth was increasing month after month. Inflation was at 2% rates, and we were moving ahead rapidly and strongly. Americans today, though, are rightly concerned about rising costs of living, slow job growth, and unemployment rates that remain above 4%. Not to mention the inflation rate that cumulatively over just the last three and a half years is now, I believe, well over 20%. Taxpayers already face too much uncertainty as they look to work, save, and invest in this economic environment. And given the litany of tax hike proposals on the table from my Democratic colleagues, no area is more uncertain as we head into this election than tax. When it comes to 2025 tax policy and the debate, those proposing all of these tax increases continue to avoid a fundamental question. Will they allow the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act to expire and inflict multi-trillion-dollar tax hikes on the American people? That's the question. Vice President Harris largely has avoided the policy specifics and has adopted rhetoric about taxing the wealthy and corporations, which ignores the reality of what our current tax code means for middle-income taxpayers. The TCJA lowered tax rates across the board, providing trillions of tax dollars in savings, with the middle-income taxpayers receiving the largest proportional benefit of these cuts. That's the reality. It also doubled the standard deduction and doubled and expanded the child tax credit, which made the tax code simpler and provided targeted tax relief for the middle class. If these provisions are allowed to expire, individuals making less than $400,000 per year would face a tax increase at the end of 2025 of more than $2 trillion, breaking the Biden-Harris pledge not to impose more taxes on the middle class. And that does not even account for inflation. By the end of this year, that pledge would need to be increased to nearly $500,000 to account for the crushing inflation that families have experienced under the Biden-Harris administration. The pledge also ignores the marriage penalty for couples who together make more than $400,000, but who, if filing separately, would be well below it. Despite her promise to those starting businesses, Vice President Harris has also not addressed the 20% deduction for pass-throughs, the chosen business form for 95% of American businesses. Small business owners have repeatedly said that extending this deduction is their top priority. I said, small business owners and top priority, stressing that it enables them to create new jobs, pay their employees more, and reinvest their business, in their businesses. Unless Congress moves to extend these provisions by the end of next year, taxpayers in that category of our economy would face the largest tax increase in U.S. history. Despite critics' rhetoric that the TCJA was simply a tax break for billionaires, the law provided a tax break for 80% of Americans and actually limited tax breaks for the wealthy by reducing costly deductions. For example, the TCJA limited the state and local tax deduction, or SALT, effectively a subsidy for many high-income residents in high-tax states like California and New York. In stark contrast, the Senate Democrats have pledged as recently as last month to end the SALT, which even the left-leaning Tax Policy Center said would overwhelmingly benefit high-income households. By endorsing the Biden budget, Vice President Harris is calling for $5 trillion of tax increases on Americans, which would clearly hit Americans across the income spectrum and hurt job creators and workers across the country. Tax hikes on individuals and families, tax hikes on small business owners, including a top pass-through rate of 44.6%, which amounts to a tax increase of more than 50%. Tax hikes on corporations, and we all know that the burden of corporate tax rates are paid by workers, consumers, and retirees. Tax hikes on savings and investment, and another round of supersized funding for the IRS audits. Again, these far-left proposals are often presented under the guise of taxing the rich and paying one's fair share. But facts matter, and it remains indisputable that most of the federal tax burden is paid by high earners, and the federal tax collections are at near all-time highs. In fact, the TCJA made the tax code even more progressive, with tax rates for high-income earners actually increasing, while the bottom 50% of earners received the largest reduction in average tax rates. This Biden-Harris administration has repeatedly and falsely claimed that the federal tax rate for high-income earners is only 8%. But the Joint Committee on Taxation recently confirmed their average rate is quadrupled that amount at 34%. As this committee considers tax policy in the year ahead, the American people deserve more than empty platitudes and $5 trillion in tax hike proposals that even a fully Democrat Congress could not pass. They deserve careful deliberation of policies that will provide economic growth, tax certainty, and opportunities for all Americans. I'm committed to helping all hard-working taxpayers get ahead, and I will work with anyone from either party who's ready to focus on that priority. We have an excellent panel before us today. I thank you all for being here, and I look forward to hearing your testimony.
I thank my colleague, and I'm just going to give a brief, this analysis that I gather people want to cite excludes the vast majority of the income of the super wealthy. Billionaires don't earn income the same way as firefighters and teachers. So this funny math that is being spread around with respect to high earners pay a 34% rate, this is funny math you come up with when you ignore buy, borrow, and die. When you take into account all of the income that the super wealthy enjoy, we know that billionaires are only paying 8% in taxes, far lower than working people are paying from each paycheck. And the reality is, you can't get this job done right by ignoring these realities that really reflect an accurate analysis of what the super wealthy pay. The top 1% in America holds 31% of wealth in this country, and I think that has got to be part of the equation. I look forward to talking to my colleagues about this in greater detail. But this idea that the highest earners in America are paying a 34% tax rate, this is the funny math you come up with when you ignore buy, borrow, and die, which, as I've talked about in this room, is a glide path to the people at the very top paying no taxes forever. And we're going to be discussing that, and Senator Crapo and I will have a good debate on that, and that's, heaven forbid, sort of the way good governance takes place, when you debate it. OK. One little bit of business, and then we'll introduce our guests today. We're very welcoming of George Helmy today. He is our new president. He is our new senator from New Jersey. I think he's going to be a real asset around here. He and I have had a number of conversations. He has a great interest in healthcare and a whole host of questions there, and of course is going to be a champion, based on our conversations, of the idea that we've talked about, which is you can have success and fairness in America. Senator Crapo, I know would like to say something.
Mr. Chairman, I just had the pleasure of meeting George, and I just wanted to join with you in welcoming him to the Senate and to this committee.
So you now have 100% of the bipartisan leadership welcoming you. Mr. Helmy, would you like to say a quick word, and then we'll go on to our hearing?
I will be quick, Chairman. I just want to thank you, Chairman, and the ranking member, for your generosity and your kindness. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on this esteemed committee as a career staffer. It's an honor and a privilege to be in this room. I appreciate the collegiality and the debate that happens in this esteemed institution, and look forward to being an active part of it for the time that I'm here, and thank you all.
Well, thank you, and based on our conversations in the basketball parlance that I like to talk about, it's clear you've come to play, and we very much appreciate that.
I did appreciate the reference to Bill Bradley, of course, a great New Jerseyan.
What we always say around here is there are two tall guys on the Finance Committee who play basketball. One of them is in the NBA Hall of Fame, the other was a college scrub, so we keep this in perspective. Okay, let's introduce our guests. We'd like to start by introducing Duttagupta. He's the Doris Duke Distinguished Fellow at the McCourt School of Public Policy at Georgetown, as well as a fellow at the Roosevelt Institute. Bob Lord is a senior advisor on tax policy for patriotic millionaires. We welcome you, Bob. You've been giving us good counsel for years. Jeff Brayben is the Vice President for Federal Government Relations at the National Federation of Independent Businesses. We've worked with you all often. And our final witness is Daniel Bun, the President and CEO of the Tax Foundation. I saw Scott Hodgins got a new book out, and I'll get through that before too long. Thanks to our witnesses for being here. As is customary, your prepared statements are going to be made a part of the record. So let's, if you wouldn't mind, take your five minutes to summarize, and let's start with our friend from Georgetown. Indhavar, please.
Thank you, Chairman Wyden, Ranking Member Crapo, and members of the committee. My name is Indi Duttagupta. I'm a Doris Duke Distinguished Visiting Fellow at the McCourt School of Public Policy and a Tax Fellow at the Roosevelt Institute, and I'm honored to come before this committee to provide context for tax avoidance by some of the wealthiest Americans and discuss how collecting more revenues from them can strengthen our nation. The United States faces extreme economic inequality that harms our society. Income inequality is near historic highs, with the top 1% experiencing nearly 10 times faster growth in incomes than the bottom 20% over the past four decades. Wealth inequality is even more pronounced, with the top 0.1% holding over 13% of total net worth. This extreme concentration of income and wealth undermines economic growth, likely reduces economic mobility, and contributes to political polarization. Research on wealthy countries shows that when income inequality rises, economic growth falls. High-income inequality also appears to reduce intergenerational mobility, and research confirms that our growing income inequality has contributed to our partisan polarization. Our tax system has contributed to this situation by privileging income from wealth over income from work. While most Americans receive their income from their labor, the top 0.1% receive most of their income from what they already own. Yet our tax code offers numerous advantages for income from wealth. Capital gains and dividend taxes are at lower rates than the taxes on wages. Gains on assets disproportionately held by the ultra-wealthy are taxed only when sold, and taxes on unrealized gains are wiped out at death through stepped-up basis. As a result, many ultra-wealthy individuals pay very low effective tax rates. By one estimate, the 400 wealthiest families paid federal income tax rates of just 6% to 12% from 2010 through 2018, when including unrealized gains. In some years, some American billionaires do not pay a single penny in federal individual income tax. Policymakers have several options to create a more equitable tax system that raises needed revenue. Fully fund IRS enforcement focused on high-income taxpayers yielding up to $390 billion in revenues over 10 years. Tax unrealized capital gains annually for the ultra-wealthy, potentially acting as a form of withholding like the rest of us are subject to. Strengthen estate and inheritance taxes to reduce dynastic wealth accumulation, including by eliminating stepped-up basis, and raise capital gains and dividend tax rates for the wealthy. These reforms would help rebalance our tax code and economy. The revenues could fund highly worthwhile investments to lift living standards across society. I'll provide three examples. First, we can ensure a basic foundation for all of us to thrive. A vast array of rigorous empirical studies has demonstrated that such a foundation can help working and middle-class families stabilize their lives, advance in the labor market, and ensure that their children succeed. To achieve these outcomes, we could expand the child tax credit, earned income tax credit to reduce child poverty and boost work, invest in needed caregiving through affordable childcare, paid leave, and long-term care to support families, expand access to affordable housing, and make health coverage truly universal. Second, we can provide fair access to opportunity, including through much-needed education and workforce development investments that weaken the harmful link between parents' finances and their children's outcomes in adulthood. Third, we can fund climate change mitigation and adaptation efforts and ensure that our environment supports rather than threatens our health, well-being, and ways of life. Research suggests that our extreme concentrations of income and wealth are holding back our economy. Countries with comparable or higher middle-class living standards like Norway, Switzerland, Luxembourg, and Canada have far lower inequality. The only OECD countries with greater inequality than us have far lower living standards, and income and wealth gaps by race and gender hold us all back. One study estimates that closing racial wealth gaps alone could boost GDP by 4% to 6%. Fundamentally, higher taxes on the wealthy and ultra-wealthy can be fair and efficient and help fuel equitable economic growth that raises living standards for all Americans, all while strengthening our democracy. Thank you, and I look forward to questions.
Thank you very much, and a good way to start off. We'll go next to you, Mr. Lord. Welcome.
Thank you. Chair Wyden, Ranking Member Crapo, and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about tax avoidance by the ultra-rich. After a three-decade-plus run as a tax lawyer, I recently transitioned into my real passion, well, my work passion, federal tax policy. I currently serve as the Senior Advisor for Tax Policy with the Patriotic Millionaires, a group of wealthy Americans who use their wealth and influence to try and build a more stable, equitable economy that works for everyone. But it was my career helping clients shrink their tax obligations that gave me insight into just how porous our tax law is and informs my perspective here today. All tax attorneys remember Judge Learned Hand's opinion in Gregory versus Helvering from their introductory tax class. It established a bedrock principle of tax law: There is no patriotic duty to pay tax. Taxpayers are free to arrange their affairs so as to minimize their tax obligations. My testimony today pertains to tax avoidance of the type to which Judge Hand referred and not to criminal tax evasion or civil tax fraud. So my remarks are not intended to impugn the character of rich Americans who engage in such tax avoidance or the advisors who assist them. But I do think Americans are stunned when they learn that some billionaires face a lower effective rate of taxation than they do. Presented with that reality, they feel the tax law is rigged against them. In my experience assisting ultra-wealthy clients, their concern over taxation was limited to how it impacted their wealth. Unlike for most Americans, tax obligations for the ultra-rich don't impact life decisions. Some ultra-rich clients of mine opted out of tax avoidance; it just didn't enhance their quality of life. That's important. Limiting tax avoidance by the ultra-rich won't keep their kid from attending college, delay their retirement, or inconvenience them in any way. They won't even have to sell their yacht to pay their taxes. They will never want for anything; it will simply reduce the excess wealth they accumulate. The ultra-rich avoid tax largely through strategies developed by highly-paid experts like me. Last year, your committee heard testimony on one such strategy, Buy, Borrow, Die, where ultra-rich Americans buy investment assets and never sell them; instead, they borrow against them whenever they need cash. After they die, their inheritors then sell what typically are highly-appreciated assets with no income tax consequence. Avoidance strategies like Buy, Borrow, Die result from exploitation by the ultra-rich of design flaws in the tax system, commonly known as loopholes. One type of design flaw is a rule that assigns vastly different tax consequences to minor differences in circumstances. For example, if a taxpayer sells an appreciated asset one day before his death, he must pay tax on the gain he realizes. But if his inheritor sells that same asset shortly after the taxpayer's death, the gain, potentially in the billions of dollars, escapes income taxation. That's the stepped-up basis rule. It's the loophole that enables the Buy, Borrow, Die strategy. In 2013, Bloomberg News reported on an ultra-wealthy family's use of zeroed-out Grantor retained annuity trust, or GRATs as we know them, to transfer $7.9 billion of wealth at no estate or gift tax cost. Shortly thereafter, the tax lawyer who developed the zeroed-out GRAT strategy estimated that wealthy Americans had avoided $100 billion or more of estate tax through GRATs. Closing the GRAT loophole is not complicated. Chair Wyden and Senators Warren and Sanders all have introduced bills that would work, yet the loophole remains open, over a decade after becoming widely known. That should alarm Americans, because these are just the known loopholes. As a former tax lawyer, I can tell you, tax lawyers do not share our more ingenious avoidance strategies. Early in my career, I saw bipartisan efforts successfully address glaring flaws in our tax code. The passive activity loss rules of the 1986 Tax Act, for example, virtually shut down an entrenched tax shelter industry. More successes like that are achievable, but it's Congress and Congress alone that has the power to close these loopholes. My written remarks discuss additional examples of loopholes, the strategies devised to exploit them, and how they could be narrowed or closed. I'm eager to chat with you more about them. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lord. I know we'll have some questions. Brayben, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Wyden, Ranking Member Crapo, and members of the Senate Committee on Finance. My name is Jeff Brayben, and I am the Vice President of Federal Government Relations for the National Federation of Independent Business. It is an honor to testify before your committee today on NFIB's number-one federal priority: Making the 20% Small Business Deduction Permanent. I am here on behalf of the approximately 300,000 small and independent business owners that NFIB represents. NFIB is the voice of small business. The voice of small business is not just a slogan, but a reality that drives the advocacy work of NFIB members and staff. The average NFIB member represents fewer than eight employees, with about 88% of NFIB members employing fewer than 20 people. NFIB represents every industry in America, including retail, manufacturing, agriculture, and financial services, among many others. I am also here to submit as part of my testimony the names of over 81,100 small business owners who have signed this petition asking Congress to stop the massive tax hike on small businesses. In 2017, Congress passed the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. One of the most publicized aspects of TCJA was the cut to the corporate rate from 35% to 21%. This benefited small business owners, as over 20% small employers are organized as C corporations. However, over 77% of small employers and well over 90% of all small businesses are organized as pass-through businesses. This means that business income passes through to an individual business owner's personal income tax. Types of pass-through businesses include sole proprietorships, partnerships, and S corporations. With C corporations receiving a 14% rate cut and pass-throughs only initially receiving a 2.6% cut of the top rate, Congress realized they needed to do something so that small pass-through businesses were not placed at a competitive disadvantage with their larger rivals. Congress wisely decided to create the 20% Small Business Deduction, officially known as the Section 199A Qualified Business Income Deduction. This deduction has allowed most small business owners to take up to a 20% deduction on qualified business income. While qualified business income sounds complicated, it closely mirrors net revenue. The creation of the 20% Small Business Deduction has been crucial to the survival of small business owners. Since its passage, the small business economy has endured many issues, including a pandemic that closed many businesses for long periods, record inflation, and a historically tight labor market. This deduction empowered small business owners and allowed them to not only survive these difficult times, but to thrive. However, small business owners are now confronted with a new reality. If Congress fails to act, the 20% Small Business Deduction will expire at the end of 2025, and over 90% of small business owners will see a significant tax increase. This tax increase will come at a time when their larger C corporation competitors will not be seeing a tax increase, and at a time when inflation remains hugely problematic for small employers. NFIB member Michael Irvin of Coal River Coffee Company in St. Albans, West Virginia, said it best earlier this year at a House Committee on Ways and Means hearing. These tax increases do not exist in a vacuum. My larger competitors, like Starbucks and Tim Hortons, are organized as C corporations and pay a 21% federal corporate rate, which is permanent. If the Small Business Deduction lapses and my marginal rates increase, I could be steering an effective tax rate of nearly 45% when you combine federal and state income tax rates. This 45% tax is not a tax on my take-home pay like some high-wage W-2 employees; this is a tax on my business income. With a pass-through business like mine, I am taxed on business income whether I reinvest that money in my business and create new jobs or take it home as profit. This morning, NFIB, in conjunction with EY, released a macroeconomic analysis of the small business impact of permanently extending the 20% Small Business Deduction. This study concluded that permanently extending this provision would increase jobs in the small business sector by 1.2 million jobs each year for the first 10 years and by 2.4 million every year after. Extending the 20% Small Business Deduction would also result in a $750 billion GDP increase in the small business sector over the first 10 years and a $150 billion increase annually after that. Lastly, recent NFIB research indicates that if taxes were to increase in 2026, 61% of small business owners surveyed reported they would raise prices, and 44% reported they would postpone or cancel capital investments. The decisions Congress makes reflect the values of a Congress. Over the next year, Congress will debate the merits of extending over $4 trillion worth of tax provisions. Members of Congress should ask themselves if they really believe it when they say, "Small businesses are the backbone of America." If they truly believe that statement and value small businesses in their communities, then making the 20% Small Business Deduction permanent should be a no-brainer.
Thank you. I know we're going to have some questions in a moment. Welcome, Mr. Bun.
Thank you, Chairman Wyden, Ranking Member Crapo, for the opportunity to testify today. Before I get started, I want to recognize Senator Harper for your long service as part of this body and part of this committee. I doubt I'll have another opportunity to testify here before you retire, so I want to wish you well in that retirement. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. This is off the record, but I just received my first job offer on my post-senate to be Commissioner of Corrections for the state of Delaware, to all of our prisons, so I've had some experience at that.
Excellent. As the Jewish people would say, "Oy." Mr. Bun, welcome.
I think it was an offer made in jest. We'll see.
It may have been.
Thank you.
I want to start by saying concerns about avoidance should be bipartisan, but I think they should motivate conversations about policies that move the tax code into a direction of a simpler, more neutral tax code and away from a complex mess of special deductions, credits, and special provisions for different industries. I think in this conversation, it's important to take a wide-lens view of the progressivity of the U.S. tax code and notice that in 2021, the top 1% of taxpayers paid 45.8% of taxes owed. And if you even take a broader view of the entire federal, state, and local tax and transfer system, my team put together analysis looking at 2019 and found a negative 127% effective tax rate for the bottom one-fifth of households and a positive 30.7% effective tax rate for the top fifth. So the U.S. tax system is incredibly progressive. There's a lot of redistributions that's already there, and I think it's important, as we're looking to conversations about 2025, to start with some of those basic facts. You all know that 62% of households will face a tax hike if the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act are allowed to expire, and this is not something that folks are going to be able to ignore. This is going to be very meaningful in January of 2026, as withholding tables adjust and people start realizing that more money is being taken out of their paychecks. This is on the order of magnitude of an additional rent or mortgage payment. Across congressional districts, our team has identified an average of $2,800 tax hike from the expiration of both the individual and business provisions in the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. And that should, again, as I said at the beginning, motivate a conversation about what should be done and being able to look at opportunities to move the tax code in a more neutral and more neutral and more simple direction while paying attention to need for additional growth and sufficient revenue. On the neutrality front, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, there's a lot of lessons to be learned from that. The lowering of the corporate tax rate, the provision of immediate expensing for business investment, move the tax code in a more neutral decision. It got Washington out of the boardroom in a lot of senses and allowed businesses to make the investments that they needed. Unfortunately, more recent legislation, including legislation in the Inflation Reduction Act, created more complexity and less neutrality where Washington is picking particular industries or particular investments to provide benefits to. And then even with new regulations for the corporate alternative minimum tax out today, we see that there's a desire to punish certain business types and certain ways of organizing investments and income and just looking for opportunities to provide benefits to others. On the complexity front, I think it's important to look at the individual side of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. A doubling of the standard deduction and the limiting of the exposure to the alternate minimum tax saved taxpayers $10 billion in compliance costs. And these are things that should not be ignored going into 2025. There's a real chance that if this Congress does, the next Congress does not do its work, then millions of Americans, millions of taxpayers, are going to be having to hire way more complex and do more complex calculations for their tax returns just to be able to pay when their tax bill is due. And the opportunity to continue with some of that simplification is very real. I'll close talking about, a little bit about revenues and opportunity for growth. Looking at the history of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, I can't come here and say that the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act has paid for itself, but it has had a lot of benefits. And there's been a lot of interesting things that we've seen in the revenue line items. As the Ranking Member mentioned, we've been able to see historic levels of revenue. Now, the opportunity is to lean into some of the pro-growth elements that did support these historic levels of revenue and look at things like bonus depreciation, which is the most growth-impacting policy that was part of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act and should be continued. Tax Foundation is here to help. We're here to work through different policy options and think through the revenue and growth consequences and be able to provide this committee and the Congress with opportunities for simpler, more neutral tax policy that supports long-term growth but takes care of our financial needs. And with that, I look forward to your questions.
Okay, very good, and it's been an excellent way to start the discussion, have a cross-section of views. And let me start with you, if I might. Mr. Lord, is a general proposition, because you've been advising people in this area, very wealthy taxpayers, do low- and middle-income families, as a general proposition in America, have access to the same kind of advice that you have furnished the very wealthy?
No, they don't, Chairman Wyden, and there's an obvious reason for that. When I helped very wealthy families, they could save well into the thousands, sometimes tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax, so my fees were just a minor cost. But for a lower or middle-income family, where the amount of tax they might be able to save with expert advice is $500 or something like that, they can't go hire a tax attorney. It just isn't cost-effective.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about essentially how this plays out, because I continue to get reports of various approaches, and I want to get your take formally before the Finance Committee. But essentially, what I've been told is if you're very well off and you decide to call up your accountant and say, "I want to come see you because I don't want to pay income taxes at this point," you can advise them on how they do it, and that starts the glide path to literally paying no income taxes going forward. Is that true? I mean, how does it work? Describe to everybody how this actually plays out, when somebody calls you and says their objective is, "Hey, I heard this buy, borrow, and die. I don't have to pay income taxes. Calling you makes sure I don't pay any income this year, next year, and the like." Tell us a little bit about how it actually works with a client.
Well, I think it depends on the type of client, but it can be a real estate transaction, how it's structured to minimize the income tax coming out of it. It can be an estate tax client, where there's planning done through zeroed-out GRATs and other strategies to minimize or even zero out the estate tax liability. It just depends. I don't think I ever had clients where I could consistently run their income tax liability down to zero. It's not that bad. But the amount of income tax that's avoided through strategies like buy, borrow, die is very, very significant.
So you're visiting, I assume they have plenty of lawyers and accountants, and you all have this discussion going forward, and how important is it to make sure that there are changes? I've proposed changes that would make sure that people at the very top pay taxes every year, like firefighters and nurses. That's what people say when they come to a town hall meeting of mine, is they say, "Hey, I pay taxes with every paycheck. I'm a firefighter, and I'm reading about all these people who aren't paying taxes for years on end." How important is it to make changes in this buy, borrow, and die process, which sure looks to me like a glide path to getting a free ride?
I think it's critically important. Number one, as I said in my opening remarks, when Americans see this, that billionaires are paying a lower effective tax rate than they are, the tax system appears rigged to them, and they lose confidence. But when the ultra-ultra wealthy are taxed at too low a rate, they are accumulating wealth faster than the country at large, and their share of the nation's wealth is increasing year upon year. And we've seen that happen with, for example, the share of the Forbes 400 over the last 40 years, going from 1% of the country's wealth, actually a little less than that, to now about 4%. So it's important on several levels.
So let me ask your colleague, Mr. Duttagupta, is there any evidence that people at the very top are going to stop making good investments if they pay their fair share? I mean, nobody wants that to happen. As I say, I want to reward success. I want to encourage growth. I want to give everybody a chance to get ahead. Are we going to see if we make reforms here so that everybody pays and we're all in this together? Are we going to see those at the very top stop making good investments if they pay their fair share?
No. They're going to have the same motivation for profit, long-term outlook, managing risk, and if anything, we as a country will be able to make much higher quality investments.
Now, one other kind of issue that's come up, and then I'll go to my colleague, Senator Crapo. Is there evidence, any kind, that these kind of super tax breaks for those at the very top are going to pay for themselves?
No. You're lucky if you can recoup a dollar for every five or more dollars in tax breaks, which is a stark contrast to investment in children, especially those in the lowest-income households, for whom we can estimate you might recoup up to $10 for every single dollar.
I'd like to see your research or scholarship on that, because if we are paying a premium to encourage unfairness, that ought to wake everybody up. That seems to me what you're saying.
It's completely upside down. I'll submit it for the record.
Great. Senator Crapo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brayben, I'd like to start with you on Section 199A. You, I think, quite well stated the case for why it is critical that we do not let Section 199A expire, but I'd like to flesh that out a little bit with you. How many signatures were there on the petition? Was that a letter or a petition that you showed us?
That was a pretty thick stack of petitions, 81,100.
Okay, and those were small businesses?
Yep, small businesses from just about every state in the country, all over the country. We've been compiling this for a number of months.
And so I know that a big part of, there is sort of an attack on Section 199A here in Congress, and I know the attack is that 199A is a 20% basically deduction benefit to really super-big, rich taxpayers. I think that's the argument that's being made. Could you tell me if all the folks that signed those 81,000, are those partnerships? What are those?
Those are sole proprietors, partnerships, S corporations, small businesses all throughout America. And the EY study we just released today showed 26 million small businesses claimed this deduction in 2021.
And I guess I'd just like you to kind of address the issue of how many of that 26 million are the super-mega wealthy in the country?
Probably not many, if any, because this is from SBA size standards. So they're all falling under SBA size standards, so I'm assuming none of them.
I'd say these are truly small businesses, correct?
Correct.
Well, thank you. I think that that's a pretty important fact to be reminded, that Congress needs to be reminded of. Mr. Dunn, I'd like to talk with you for a minute. I was very interested in your general perspective, that we should create a tax code that is simple, that is neutral, and I guess less complex. That's the same, I guess, as simple. But could you explore with me, just put a little more meat on the bones, if you would, how should we approach trying to create simplicity and neutrality in the tax code?
Thanks so much, Senator. The approach that needs to be taken is one of looking at the entire tax code and looking at the complexity and the compliance cost, the billions and billions of dollars in compliance costs, and then taking the approach of, okay, if I'm a family, if I'm a small business owner, if I'm a corporation, how much of the time and how much of my hard-earned money am I going to be investing in complying with the tax code? And then, as much as possible, move to a system that eliminates the things that are creating a lot of that complex burden. So I think, especially in the business code, this is a ripe opportunity. And unfortunately, we are not necessarily moving kind of on a current rolling policy basis in a direction where things are getting more simple. Some of the revenue raisers from the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act created more complexity, things like expensing for research and development, things that were in the Inflation Reduction Act that I mentioned, the energy credits and the corporate alternative minimum tax, all have loaded on more complexity. And when it comes to neutrality, it's a question of who's in charge, who wants this choice or that choice? And it should not be folks in this room, it should not be folks in Washington in general. It should be the individuals, the business owners, the families, making the decision of whether, okay, is this the right decision, the right investment, the right opportunity? And at the end of the day, paying the tax that's owed, but not micromanaging those decisions through the tax code, whether it's related to different choices about childcare or housing or investing in green energy or something else. The approach should be to get Washington out of those decisions.
I just have a quick question that came into mind as you were talking. Do you know how many pages of regulations there are to interpret the Internal Revenue Code?
Not off the top of my head, but I do know that it's roughly 600-plus more as of today with the new corporate alternative minimum tax regulations.
That's right. I wish I'd brought that number with me. But what you're saying is, I think anybody who's tried to prepare a tax return, even just a family, knows that the regulations are so complex and the code is so complex that things like fixing the standard deduction and making that available, more available, and dealing with the alternative minimum tax have been phenomenally helpful to taxpayers and have not reduced revenue.
Exactly. The Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was able to cut taxes across the board while also really leaning into simplicity for so many millions of taxpayers. I have some charts in my written testimony that show the massive increase in individuals taking the standard deduction and massive decrease in individuals having to file the AMT, and those are, I would say, marks of success.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank my colleague. Senator Grassley is next.
Since there's a political purpose behind this committee meeting we're having, I want to make a couple political comments. One of them would deal with the corporate tax that's been brought up here. We all know that a corporation is a legal document. It's made up of management, it's made up of stockholders, it's made up of employees, and the results of the corporation is covered by the consumers. So corporations don't pay taxes. It's coming out of the pockets of all these other people I just mentioned that are corporations. Corporations don't pay taxes. People pay taxes. And you read about various aspects of this impact, but just one of them I'd like to note is the workers. When you increase taxes on corporations, about 50%, 60% of the tax is going to come out of wages of workers. So you've got to look at it as a very anti-worker approach to how you look at the corporate tax rate. The second thing I'd like to make a political point on is, I heard during the debate Tuesday night, Vice President Harris accusing Trump through his increase in tariffs, putting a sales tax on people. Now, I don't agree with the impact of that tariff, but let's just assume she's right. It seems to me you ought to give greater attention to the sales tax effect on the consumers in America. We have a 20% inflation rate. That's a 20% sales tax. That's the most regressive tax that you can have on society as a whole. So we're here talking about progressivity, and we've accepted progressivity ever since World War II of the income tax. And I'm not here to argue against progressivity, but I think you've got to look at the regressivity of the tax policies or the fiscal policies of this administration, the impact that it has had on inflation and that impact on every American, very, very aggressive, or regressive. Now, I want to ask Mr. Brayben. The Biden-Harris administration has consistently called for significant tax hikes on American small business owners. This includes increasing the top individual rate to 39.6, taxing capital gains as ordinary income, and increasing the net investment tax from 3.8% to 5%. Moreover, their budget proposals have assumed the expiration of the 20% small business tax deduction enacted in our 2017 bill. Can you discuss what this litany of new and expanded tax hikes would mean in terms of jobs and business investments for millions of small business owners that you represent? And also tell us, which one of these would be the most detrimental to family-run businesses?
Sure. In terms of the impacts, a recent survey, we just had our members asking them, what would they do if taxes increased in 2026, which they could assume a number of these things you just listed would happen? About 66% said they would increase prices, which you can imagine is going to be problematic with the current inflationary environment, and about 44% said they would cancel or delay capital investments back into their businesses. So obviously, it's going to have a drag on the growth of businesses, and it's going to increase prices. In terms of the most detrimental to small businesses, the 20% deduction, 20% small business deduction going away would have the largest impact.
Mr. Brayben, Harris recently proposed increasing the amount of startup costs a small business owner can expense to $50,000 from $5,000. While I'm not sure this proposal is appreciated, wouldn't it benefit, its benefits pale in comparison to those to be gained from extending the 20% small business deduction or bonus depreciation, which was in the 2017 tax bill?
Yes, I would agree. The small business deduction, and 26 million small businesses took this in 2021, so there's nothing wrong with her proposal, but it affects a much smaller percentage of small businesses, and the small business deduction affects a significantly larger swath of small businesses, so it would have a larger impact on the small business sector in general.
Senator Langford is next.
Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. I do want to spend some time talking about the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act from 2017, because obviously, it's going to be a big issue for next year. There has been some conversation in the presidential election politics lately of saying this only benefited the benefited the ultra wealthy and that it wasn't a benefit to everyone. In fact, Vice President Harris has been quoted by Bloomberg as saying that she wants to, what was the exact quote, "get rid of the whole thing," when she talks about the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. So I do want to spend some time talking about what does that mean? Mr. Brabant, you had mentioned before a statistic about how many, what's the percentage of Americans that their taxes actually declined with the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act?
So there were tax cuts across the board. And if this actually does expire, 62% of American households will see their taxes increase. And on average, across those households, across congressional districts, that's a tax increase of $2,800.
So 62% of Americans, their taxes are going to increase. The conversation about that we're only going to do a tax increase for people of $400,000 and up, interestingly enough, $400,000 and up four years ago versus now is almost $500,000 based on inflation that's just occurred in the last four years at this point. So a $400,000 four years ago would be the equivalent of almost half a million now on that, but that number hasn't changed on it. It continues to be able to increase. For the qualified business income, Mr. Brabant, you talked about, that's a pretty significant piece of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. You're talking about if the whole thing just goes away, as Vice President Harris is calling for, you're talking about a very significant increase in taxes for every small business in America.
Yep, that's nine in 10 small businesses are pass-throughs and over 26 million small businesses claim this in 2021, and they're going to be looking at a significant tax increase if it goes away.
Thank you. I've also been very interested in the concept that the richest, the ultra-rich, rich, super-rich, I've heard all the different terms, are not paying in taxes. I'd love to bring some facts to the conversation on this, actually from the Joint Committee on Taxation, the nonpartisan committee that this committee has to be able to work with to be able to get our nonpartisan facts. Yesterday, they put out a statement yesterday, just as they're looking back, they looked at 2017 tax bill, the first year after that, they've got all the records for it from 2019 now, from that year to be able to look at it, what happened with the ultra-rich in 2019? They looked at the top 0.01% of earners, top 0.01% of earners, that's 16,000 filers in America, the top 16,000 filers in America. And they said their average federal tax rate for 2019 was a 34% tax rate. Now, this seems very different than what we've talked about before, that the Joint Committee on Tax said the top 0.01% have a federal tax rate of 34%. What's left out of this is obviously the conversation saying, well, we're not taxing them on what they, on their unearned income. And that now becomes the joint conversation is, are we going to do an income tax? Are we going to do a tax that's not really an income tax, that's a tax on what you actually just have? We're going to just tax you on that. That seems to be the point of conversation here. But when we talk about the actual rate, joint tax is telling us the uber-rich are paying 34% the year after the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act came out. So I'm trying to be able to process through this, and this is a debate that we've got to be able to have because we've got to be able to get into next year to be able to establish what is a right rate on this. Several of you have mentioned actually the bonus depreciation piece, which is a piece I work on a lot on it. Mr. Brabant, talk to me a little bit about that bonus depreciation and what that means for investment in manufacturing in America.
So among economists, this is the area where there's most agreement, that from the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, this was the biggest impact for investment, biggest bang for the buck. And looking forward, we've done analysis looking at different options for extending the different policies in the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. And it is the most impactful, you know, it is certainly still a tax cut, but for per-dollar of tax cut, you're getting the most bang for the buck on growth. And it limits the amount of time that different businesses have to think about their depreciation schedules and what assets are in what class and when they're able to get their deductions. It's a real simplification and big bang for the buck on growth.
Yeah. One of the things that we did by doubling the standard deduction is simplify taxes for just about every American and trying to be able to process through this. Mr. Chairman, one thing I do want to be able to bring up that we haven't talked about here, but we'll talk about a lot next year because I'm going to continually bring it up, is that we have a bipartisan effort dealing with charitable donations. The 2017 tax bill and the changes that we made there did reduce the number of folks that are able to itemize their taxes for nonprofit donations and charitable giving. Chris Coons and I worked very hard to be able to bring multiple different proposals on the tax piece so that individuals that are non-itemizers can continue to be able to deduct some of what they give for nonprofits. We have three safety nets in America. The families, the first safety net. Churches and nonprofits are the second safety net. The third safety net is government. And so whatever we can do to incentivize people to be able to actually support both families and the safety nets of those nonprofits helps all Americans. And I want to put that in the conversation again for next year.
Happy to continue this conversation. Just want to make two points to my colleagues. Number one, the business tax break that my colleague from Oklahoma has referred to would have been taken care of in the bipartisan bill that we had with the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. So again, as with helping large families, which already could have been done today, so could have been the business break my colleagues talking about. I do want to make sure, because we did this briefly, and I don't think my colleague was here when I discussed it earlier, this analysis that the highest earners are somehow paying a 34%, you know, tax rate is based on the funny math you get when you ignore, buy, borrow, and die. And that's what we have been talking about this morning with Mr. Lord and others, is that it is possible essentially to go out and buy a bunch of, you know, properties and just sit on them and borrow, you know, against them for your lifestyle. And then when you die, everything's just recycled. And that's what we're concerned about. This is about tax avoidance. I too saw that 34%, you know, analysis, and I just want my colleagues to understand, that analysis is based on junk math. It's based on funny math that you come up with when you ignore, buy, borrow, and die. All right. Our next senator for questions will be Senator Warner. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Senator Cardin will be next in order of appearance, and then will come Senator Warner. I hate to, I hate to break Senator Warner.
I was waiting outside just to make this entry.
But as long as Senator Langford's here, this won't count against your time. I got to tell you, James. I'm just going to, no, I just want, just 30 seconds, 30 seconds, just want to say, I maybe even know some people in that 0.01% group. If they're even under the, what the chairman said, if they're paying 34% even on income, they got bad tax advisors.
I'm going to quit while I'm ahead. I want to thank my colleagues for their courtesy. Senator Cardin will be next, and then Senator Cardin will be followed by Senator Warner. Senator Cardin.
Let me thank Senator Warner. I apologize, I'm chairing another committee, and that's the reason why I'm in and out. But I did want to be here to first thank our witnesses, but also to thank our chair and our ranking member for their attention to the IRS. I've been involved in trying to modernize the IRS for a long time. My friends, Congressman Portman got me involved in that process when I was in the House of Representatives. There was a commission to try to modernize the IRS. We made some very strong recommendations. We made some progress in one year, and then it wasn't sustained. And my point is this, it's, yes, it's a collection of taxes that are owed by sophisticated taxpayers who can figure out ways not to pay taxes, that we have to have the resources at the IRS to counter that. But it's also to recognize that you're not going to change the IRS in one year. It's going to take multiple years to get it done. And I know there's disagreement on the IRA bill, but what I thought was the right policy is to give a multi-year approach so the IRS can in fact achieve their objective, because they're not going to get it done in one year. And to me, that was the strength of any reforms that we want to modernize the IRS. We've got to give them the resources in a multi-year arrangement so that they can, in fact, implement the changes and make the progress that we want. The second thing I want to, and I welcome the thoughts of the panelists, is that in the IRA, it's another aspect of that, which is direct file systems included in there, that helps the average taxpayer that has maybe W-2 income, maybe some interest income, maybe a little bit of social security income, that have to pay now hundreds of dollars and spend hours trying to figure out their tax returns, to be able to do a direct file system and they save them resources and time, which simplifies it for those who are paying the higher percentages of taxes to start off with than the higher income taxpayers who are being given the advantage because of the unfair sides between their capacity and the IRS. So it's really two parts of the tax reform issues that I thought were important, multi-year to modernize and helping the average taxpayer so that they don't have to go through the costs and expense and time of filing taxes when they have a rather simplified procedure. So I guess my question, well, I have two minutes remaining. I'll be glad to yield back one of those minutes so Senator Warner can have an extra minute of time. But is it possible to be able to really get a type of service-oriented IRS collecting, complying with the laws that Congress writes so everybody pays their fair share of taxes as defined by law without a multi-year modernization of the IRS?
I'll just say quickly, thank you for your leadership, Senator Cardin, on IRS modernization issues. It would be very difficult to do that. The IRS has shown with the funding that it did receive that it is now capable of enormous return on investment by going after some of the wealthiest folks who are clearly intentionally evading and avoiding taxes. It has allowed them to enforce sanctions and it is providing meaningful deficit reduction, which is how it's scored here by nonpartisan scorekeepers. So I think we definitely need to continue fully funding IRS to be able to provide the customer service for those purposes on enforcement, but also for lower income taxpayers. You mentioned direct file. I'm delighted to see that it's been opened up to all states to participate. I really hope they do. We have a lot of information to take the pain out of tax filing, and we are finally moving in the right direction to make this a straightforward process. And instead of going after folks who file for the EITC and CTC at high rates, we should be going after folks above $400,000 and more of income who are actually responsible for a large share of the tax gap.
And let me just advise my colleagues, the direct file was a pilot program authorized under the IRA, is now being made a permanent program and offered to all states to participate. Maryland is one of the first states that said they will participate on the direct file system that will allow our taxpayers in our state to save resources, not only in filing their federal tax returns, but their state income tax returns. I would urge my colleagues to just check with their local, if they're, if they're paying taxes, to check with their local tax collectors to take advantage of this opportunity because it can save the state resources and save your taxpayers the aggravations of having to file multiple tax returns. So it was one of the major, I think, advantages of the IRA bill was to deal with the overwhelming majority of taxpayers who should have a rather easy experience with the IRS. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank my colleague and particularly for mentioning direct file, because I remember when Dan Coats sat at the end of the dais down there, that was part of the bipartisan tax reform bill we had. And we're going to miss you for a host of reasons, but particularly for IRS, the taxation issues have been invaluable.
Rick, Vice President Harris, the Democrats are launching a war on our Main Street businesses and Americans who are already living paycheck to paycheck. In fact, Wall Street Journal, early this year, called this the $6 trillion election because we're looking at a $6 trillion tax hike if President Biden's Vice President, Kamala Harris, and Democrats have their way. From the Vice President's tie-breaking vote imposing an invasive 1099K requirements, supersizing the IRS, and her call to repeal the pass-through deduction, her record is crystal clear. She's called for an increased death tax and effectively repealing the stepped-up basis, risking the livelihood of Montana farmers and ranchers. She would raise the corporate rate to 28%. This is about global competitiveness, higher than the EU, higher than Communist China, to help fund her tax-and-spend agenda. Using our businesses as a piggy bank will cost thousands of jobs, make us less globally competitive, and decrease our GDP by an estimated $1.3 trillion. I spent most of my private sector career working for businesses that were competing globally, competing against China. And I can tell you, this is a threat to our ability to compete long-term. To put it in a different way, for each dollar of revenue raised, the economy loses $1.74, nearly double what it brings in. Vice President Harris also tatted her capital gains plan as a less painful version than what her administration previously laid out, but that simply isn't true. In addition to hiking up the rate, she will force small and family-owned businesses to pay the net investment income tax. These businesses would face an unprecedented 5% tax increase on top of what they already pay. If this isn't bad enough, she's pushing for an unconstitutional tax on unrealized capital gains to fund her far-left agenda. Now, the hearing we're having today paints our small and family-owned businesses somehow as tax-evading criminals. Using the tax code to maximize your profit so you can reinvest in your business, increase wages, hire more employees, is not wrong, despite what the Democrats may say. Mr. Brabant, how will small businesses fare in light of these draconian tax hikes? And the top rates going up about 30% if these Main Street business tax rates are increased under the Harris plan?
It would be difficult for them. A recent survey shows 66% would increase prices and about 44% would delay, postpone, or cancel planned capital investments in their small businesses.
Under this administration, we have faced record inflation. The debt has skyrocketed, increasing nearly $78,000 every second. They've negotiated disastrous, disastrous international agreement, sending US tax dollars to European bureaucrats, while families are struggling with high prices and wages and simply aren't keeping up. As one of my friends has said, the most expensive vehicle the Americans drive today is their grocery cart. Vice President Harris shows no signs of stopping these dangerous policies. In fact, she will accelerate them despite what she's saying right now. She travels the country running for president, and I'll continue to fight for our Main Street businesses.
I think what's undeniable is our tax code is a grotesque and complex monstrosity. And yes, I come at this from the standpoint, if we were to simplify and rationalize it, we could fix an awful lot of these things. And the example I'll use is, I know the chairman would like to tax unrealizable gains, which I think violates a basic tenet of taxation, wherewithal to pay. There's another way of addressing this, though. One of the problems is about 73% of corporate income is never double taxed. It builds up inside these corporations. I think it starts our M&amp;A market. So what I've suggested is, you know, why not treat the 5% of American businesses that are C corps like we do 95% of other businesses and tax the business income every year at the ownership level? I know C corps would scream, but it would go a long way toward addressing that particular problem. I've, you know, I've presented that to my colleagues. It's a way of simplifying it. Another problem we have is capital gains tax. It's just an arbitrary number. It really makes no sense. I mean, what's trying to address the fact that it's unfair to tax inflationary gains, correct? So why not just index out the inflationary gains? It's very easy to do, and then tax that at ordinary rates. Now, I just think it's bizarre that we have different levels of taxation for different types of income. From my standpoint, income is income. So that's the direction we ought to move our tax code toward, simplify, rationalize it. Like I said, it's a rational thought to say, income is income. You only tax income when you have the wherewithal to pay. If you base things on certain principles, I think that'd go a long way toward fixing things. I did want to ask Mr. Gupta and Mr. Lord, I think both of you complained about stepped-up basis, but isn't it true that stepped-up basis is applied to assets that are subject to gift and estate tax? So if you were to start taxing the stepped-up basis, you're double taxing that. Again, I realize there's certain assets that are not subject to, you know, because they're exempt, you have the personal exemption, but beyond that, you'd be grossly unfair to provide a gift or estate tax and then on top of that, tax the gain. Would you not agree with that?
Senator, I would respectfully disagree for a couple of reasons. The estate tax and the income tax are two different taxes. We have a kind of a transactional tax system in We have a kind of a transactional tax system in America. If I get paid wages and then I go to the store and pay sales tax on my purchases, that's not double taxation. But beyond that, the estate, the estate and gift tax planning is such that it actually can be accomplished to avoid estate and gift tax entirely and get stepped-up basis.
But let me go back. So if you're talking about assets that are income-producing, and you go to my system where all income is taxed at the ownership level every year, it's already been taxed. If you're talking about assets that appreciate primarily because of inflation, we ought to be indexing that out anyway. You know, then on top of that, you throw a penalty of a transfer because a gift tax, or again, whatever, that's, that is the, that's the penalty tax. You know, you're transferring an asset to your heir and/or gifting to somebody. Now, we're going to penalize that. Mr. Brabant, I mean, can you comment on this?
Yeah, I mean, it's a real concern for family businesses, and the estate tax is always a huge deal for family businesses. If you can, if you compound this with getting rid of stepped-up basis, there's a real concern that family businesses will more often than not be sold, and usually to larger businesses and who don't have the same footprint in local communities.
Mr. Bun, can you want to comment a little bit, just in terms of the irrationality of how we treat different types of income differently? Basically, what I'm talking about is, you know, let's simplify and rationalize our tax code. That ought to be, you know, kind of our driving mantra in terms of fixing these things.
Yeah, I would say on stepped-up basis, if you, if you change that policy without changing anything else, it's going to create a lot of significant problems and tax hikes, some of the problems that Mr. Brabant mentioned. I think generally, though, we're in agreement, moving towards a more simple system, a system that we can, you know, recognize the horizontal and vertical equity, as many public finance folks talk about, and be able to just rationalize things so that compliance and administration are lower cost.
So again, I would just suggest to get, focus on areas of agreement. I agree. I think we agree. Growing income inequality is a real problem. I think we agree, we have incredibly complex tax system. So let's focus on that area of agreement, and let's try and make our tax system simpler and more rational, and it'll address a lot of the problem in terms of growing income inequality. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank my colleague. We're going to go to Senator.
I commend both the chair and the ranking member. We got to, we got to grapple with this, and I do hope that we think about some principles before we immediately default to litigating the corporate rate or the top rate alone as a framework. I would, and I'm sure other members have mentioned this, but I haven't mentioned it yet, as somebody who has kind of looked at this issue for a long time, and I'm in a relatively small minority of senators, I can actually read a balance sheet, we're looking at the tax piece, we got to have more revenues, because partially, and I know people have tangentially touched on this, but the last time we seriously looked at revenues and expenditures was really the Simpson-Bowles Commission. And it was my first gang in the United States Senate. I won't identify one of those gang members, I'm not sure he still wants to claim it, but it was like, I know Mike Crepo, I spent a lot of time. And we thought our heads were going to explode because the debt was going to get to 16 or 17 trillion. We're now at 35 and counting. And frankly, neither political party has any credibility on the issue. But if we look just last year, $1.7 trillion deficit, 700 million of that was interest on the debt. The interest on the debt is going to eat us up. So I do hope as we think about tax, we also think about long-term debt. And so I got a couple of notions. You know, one, we had some ideas about long-term social security stability, and it looked at CPI, it looked at raising the cap, it looked at actually increasing the bottom quintile for those folks who rely on social security entirely. They can't get by at the current rate. But maybe one of the best things that we came up with was, on an issue like social security, which is really a lot around math, we ought to put in our requirement that we should pick a solvency number, 50 years, 60 years, 70 years, and automatically fix it every 10 years so that we don't kick the can as we've done since 1983 to who knows when on fixing social security, but every 10 years it gets fixed for another future 50, 60, 70 years solvency. That might be a kind of a big idea that we could look at. One of the things, and I echo what you said, Mr. Chairman, my dear friend Michael Bennett has said about child tax rate, there are other investments around kids that we could make. But one of the things we might want to talk about bipartisan is, you know, federal government right now on tax policy and direct spending, we spend about six bucks per person for everybody 65 and older. We spend less than a dollar for everybody 18 and younger. And I don't know a politician at any level, local, state, or federal, that doesn't say, it's all about the children. We never put our money where our mouth is. So maybe we could start, and Chairman, ranking, and ranking members, maybe we ought to say one of the goals of this tax reform ought to be, that ratio ought to, maybe not be six to one, but maybe it ought to be five to two. And then we could argue about how we get there. But if we had something overarching where we said we want to think about intergenerational burdens and obligations, that might be a concept that would be worth exploring. I've shared this with the chairman a couple of times. I think, you know, another area, and this is more on the kind of savings side, but we have heard in healthcare about technology improvements for decades. You know, there is not a new drug that doesn't promise savings. There is not a new procedure that doesn't promise savings. There is not a new wearable device that doesn't promise long-term savings. Yet, net, all these technology savings never end up driving healthcare costs down. So maybe we ought to think about tax code and other things that incense a technology savings around healthcare. And I know my clock's ticking down. One other, AI is going to be, I think most of us know, the most transformative new technology around. It is going to create a lot of job elimination. From that job elimination, from government and private sector, we ought to figure out a way to recoup some of those savings so they don't just disappear, maybe towards debt and deficit reduction, I'd argue there, but maybe towards actually retraining workers that through no boss of their own or have their jobs eliminated. These are things, kind of ideas, that I hope, and I really have great faith in both of you guys and the members of this committee writ large, to see if we could have a discussion at some point about overall goals, and with one of these kind of conversations without mentioning rates at all. That ought to be the tail and not the dog. And my apologies to the panel.